The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking, First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Moorean, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank, the difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Okay, you should have a copy of your statement of revenue and expenditures for the month of September if you want any questions.
I move that we approve the statement of revenue and expenditures as given to us at the agenda meeting and presented by the City Clerk.
Second.
Motion in second to accept the statement of revenue and expenditures. Any discussion? If not, we will have roll call. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
Yes.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Alderman Burks.
Yes.
Okay. And you should have a copy of your cash balances for the month of September there. And I see the sales and use taxes city received for the month of September, ninety-five thousand three hundred fourteen dollars fifty-three cents, for year-to-date total of eight hundred three thousand six hundred eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. City taxes were up by eleven percent at the same time last year. In the county, we received sixty-eight thousand twenty dollars and eighty-six cents, for year-to-date total of three five hundred fifty-two thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and one cent. Those taxes were up by eight percent at the same time last year. And we should also have a copy of the district court per se report for September, as well as the third quarter over town report. That is my question. Okay, thank you. All right, my report, we will start with the Water Department request, and Ms. Tanay Reeve is here. If you would like to just go ahead and explain to the council since not everybody was at the agenda meeting, what the Water Department would like to request of the city for the building, the street department building.
So, we're requesting to be able to use the street department building that the street department is moving out of. Basically, we are running out of room for storage, and some of our equipment has to be stored indoors during the winter. It can't get below freezing. So, we would like that building to use somewhat as a shop, storage, those kind of things. My commission has already agreed that if we're allowed to use it, we would put a roof on it, maintain it, ensure it, just like we do with the rest of our buildings.
City utilities, etc. I move that we refer this to the Community and Economic Development Committee to see if there are any foreseeable plans for that building. Bring it back to the council.
Okay, there's a motion in second to move this to the Economic Community Development Committee for further discussion. And we've got a motion in second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to add, which firmly, the Community and Economic Development Committee is scheduled to meet on the eighteenth. Let that be an agenda.
That is correct. I mean, we do have a meeting scheduled for the eighteenth.
Okay. Will you add that to the agenda, please, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. All those in favor of this motion, let's roll call. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
Yes.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then water and sewer grant application. Tanay will explain that to you. Everybody received something by email today, myself included, so I will turn it over to Tanay to let her explain to you what's going on with this additional grant.
Did everyone get a copy of the email? Or did I get a hard copy? I know those went out a little late. We got it. We would like to apply for grant for the state Arba funds. The governor just released two-hundred-and-seventy million to water and wastewater. We would like to apply for a grant. The grant would cover seventy-five percent of the cost. The city would be responsible for twenty-five percent of the cost, which we already have secured funding for. For water, it would be one million one hundred eighty dollars and fifty-three cents. And for wastewater, the total grant would be three million three hundred thousand forty-seven two ninety-nine.
Point fifty.
Point fifty, yes.
I move that the City of Moorean mayor be authorized to sign the American Recovery Act funds grant application for the water and sewer, and that the City of Moorean water and sewer be responsible for the twenty-five percent cost, and that there be no financial obligation to the City of Moorean governing body or mayor.
Sir.
Motion in second to allow the mayor to sign the grant application for water and sewer. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
Yes.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Alderman Burks.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Reeve, that's all on the agenda for the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a street closing request for the homecoming parade, same thing as usual every year, submitted by the.
Sir.
Motion in second to, yes, motion in second to allow, to approve the street closing for the homecoming parade. Any discussion? If not, a roll call vote. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
Yes.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Alderman Burks.
Yes.
Okay, next item is we need to amend the personnel policy. You have a copy of the amendment that we need to make to our policy.
I move that we table this item until after we see the audit report and review as stated by the auditor as mentioned at the agenda meeting.
Sir.
Motion in second to table this until after the audit report comes out. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote by roll call. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
Yes.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Alderman Burks.
Yes.
Okay, we have another amendment to consider. This is requested by the building and codes, a request. You have a copy of it in your package. Need to amend the manufactured home section of eight point six point two.
I move that we table until further study and review.
Sir.
Okay, a motion to table until further study.
And review.
And review. And there's a second. Is there any discussion?
This, did this come from Rob?
Yes.
Can we get him to explain to us what, or is that supposed to come and table him?
We need more, I need more information. I mean, I don't know.
Can you, like, can we ask you to explain it now, or is that later?
You can ask for it.
I just don't want to do anything out of Rob's rules.
That's appropriate.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, that's what I should say instead of Rob.
I'm sorry. I'm one.
There's a motion and second on the floor to table this until further review and discussion. And now Alderman Burks.
No.
Frazier.
Burks.
I said that, right? Burks, Frazier.
Yes.
Would like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay. I just want you to explain it, like.
We have a policy in our planning commission book right now, eight point six point two is a section that is located, that a mobile home that is twenty-foot period cannot be stored in the front yard. And after discussing with the planning commission, they wanted to pull that and change it to Camping trailer RV and vacation trailers cannot be stored or parked in the front part of the yard. It has no limit, length limit.
Oh, okay. So, it doesn't have to be twenty. Right now, somebody can store an eighteen-foot camping trailer.
Well, they can't store anything longer than a twenty. You can store an eighteen, up to a twenty, but if you've got a twenty-four, it doesn't say. The reason we looked at it because I got challenged.
That's what I was gonna ask.
A neighbor complained about a camper that was in the front yard. Said, "I thought we had an ordinance." Well, when I went out to look, it was like a twenty-eight-foot camper. And it didn't say if you have a twenty-eight-foot camper, you can store it in the front yard. It called it stops is at twenty-foot. It says you cannot have anything twenty-foot or longer in the front yard, twenty-foot or shorter in the front yard. It doesn't say you can't have a twenty-eight-foot.
So, it just needs to be changed or.
That's what the planning commission, and we all got to get a just thought about it because, and that's what this is about.
Okay, so we still have the motion on the, to table it for further discussion and review. Any more discussion? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like to add that the Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-five two oh two, my concern is there are six rules to remember about passing an ordinance or actually amending an ordinance. So, number one is the ordinance must be reasonable. Review, study, make sure that it is reasonable, and Alderman Burks did ask for your clarification. Number two, they must not be oppressive. Number three, they must be, they must not be discriminating or partial to ensure that the whole City of Moorean is reviewed or looked at upon. Number four, they must not unduly restrain lawful trade. Number five, they must not violate civil rights. Number six, they must not be ambiguous, and that's why I said, I feel that there should be study and I understood what you stated.
Okay. Call for the vote. Ask for a vote. Roll call, please, ma'am. Alderman Marshall.
Yes.
Alderman O'Frey.
Yes.
Alderman Mosley.
Yes.
Alderman Frazier.
No.
Alderman Henderson.
Yes.
Alderman Burks.
Yes.
Okay, now then, one other question to you, Alderman Henderson, is where would you like, I mean, how would you like further review and discussion handled? Do we need to put it before sanitation committee, or where would you like to take it?
That would be the appropriate committee, yes.
Okay.
Now, this recommendation comes from the planning commission. It's already been through the planning commission stage, and they.
But we have city council committees, so the planning commission is not a governing body member.
I understand that. I was just reminding y'all that it.
Very clear that it was a planning committee.
I understand.
Okay, then we need to set a sanitation committee meeting to have further discussion.
Our full council as a whole.
Okay, you want to put it back on the agenda for next city council meeting? And have some questions or, you know, get some.
Table for study and review.
Okay. All right, that is all that's on my report. We're ready for public comment. Does any Alderman have any public comment? No. No one signed in? Okay, so we have no one that has signed in or called in for a public comment. Okay, we will move to our reports. Start with our police chief.
Once again, this has been business team of the police department. You guys have a copy of my month's report. It's pretty much detailed, everything that needs to be checked by. In order to make it not seem so bleak, like I said before, a lot of things happen later on in the month that don't get on the month's report, but I would like to announce that we did at the end of last week of September, we received approximately ten thousand dollars, three thousand dollars in a grant fund, and a little over seventy-five hundred dollars on drug forfeiture, to help out with some of the, offset some of the cost of our repairs and other equipment needed at the police department. So, that was a ray of sunshine at the end of the month. But other than that, like I said, you have to go report in front of our office and city to stay in the one police department.
I have a question relating the dog catcher. We have a lot of dogs that's roaming. What procedure does he or she, whomever that person is, utilize in catching the dogs or getting the dogs to the owners?
Well, it's not so much, I'm glad you asked that question because it's a problem that we have. It's not so much a stray dog that they're away from their owners, you know, dogs are out in nature, so they tend to reproduce. And so, our pounds can only hold up to about a dozen dogs, and so we can only hold so many dogs. So, it does get to the point where we cannot hold any dogs, or euthanize them in the process we're supposed to be euthanizing. But time becomes the point where we don't have any room, any place to place the dogs, so if they're not vicious and haven't been attacking anyone, just run around town, but we don't have to answer for that because we have no place to place them unless we're going to extend and build a larger dog pound to hold more square dogs. We have a kind of a small capacity dog pound based on the population of the city.
There's some of us that feel that any dog that run upon you and.
Definitely, I'm the same way. I do feel the same way. Like I said, what we have to do is if, when we have a call on stray dog that's running loose, we have to.
So, we have to call it in. I mean, does.
Actually, he patrols. I am a patrol, I'm a dog patrol. Yes, he patrols.
Where does he patrol? I mean, he have certain streets that he patrols?
Control the city of Moore.
Yeah, I've seen him, and he knocks on through dogs.
Yes, ma'am. But what happens was a lot of times, like I said, when we run out of road.
But that's beginning at eight o'clock in the morning, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What if we have, what if, what? We have a vicious dog, we do call out at night before we come out and get the dog if it's vicious. But like I said, what we run into is that the capacity of the pound does not hold a large capacity of dogs. And then, like I said, we're not just really, merely going to go out and euthanize and try to find homes for things of that nature. So, when we're at full capacity.
So, you all do that, find homes for them?
Yes, ma'am. Well, yes, ma'am. We work with the animal shelter out, out the animal clinic, and we have people that volunteer that also help us. We've had dogs, had airplanes flown in and picked up dogs, leave them, flown to the east coast, and homes been found for them. So, yes, ma'am, we do actively seek to try to find homes for other than to euthanize them. But, you know, sometimes we have to do what we have to do when it comes to the point where we run out of space and the dogs are overflowing in town. But that's the issue that we have. It's not that we're not actually trying to remove the dogs from town and from the rest of the streets, but we run out of road, decide to move.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that along.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Frazier, do you have anything to add to your, to the police commission report?
No, I want to have a meeting. I'm just not sure. Andy was not here. Who else is on that committee?
Burks and Mosley, and you.
So, I'll set up a police committee meeting in the next two months, before Christmas.
Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you. Fire chief, Moore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Fire department responded to six calls during the month of September, two were toned out to the entire department. We held our monthly meeting on September sixth, with twenty-two members present, had a volunteer payroll of eight hundred and sixty dollars. Had two trainings. We had a pipeline awareness meeting with the one-one people on September sixth. And on the twentieth of September, we burned a house at eight oh seven Henry for training. We did have one high fire on the twenty-first on Railroad Street. There was one civilian burned injury in that fire. Of the methods.
Did you say one was burned?
Yes, ma'am, one man was burned.
One was burned.
No, ma'am, it was a civilian. Those men that lived in the house were burned, and I think he's still in a little rock in the burning thing. And we are currently under a burn ban, and we'll be put in force in the future. So, I had a man tell me that he thought it had been, he thought it had been rescinded. I said, "Well, did it rain at your house?"
It rained, it froze out this evening.
It had a little sack of luna on the floor.
What, chief, you said you burnt the house on Henry Street.
Yes, sir.
For training. And you stirred up a lot of people that want to know about that. Could you give the information that they have to go through to do that?
If you come to us, and we deem it safe, the fire department charges five hundred dollars that paid to the city, but the homeowner is responsible for.
And there's a form.
And there's an liability relief form that has to be signed, and relieving us of any liability. But like I said, first, we have to look at it and make sure we can safely do it. We had previous fire in this house, and they decided to go on and burn it, and they moved it in a nice little mobile home and made it out of the place.
Anything else, Alderman O'Frey, as chairman?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, sanitation, Esther Johnson.
Anybody have any questions about the sanitation? Everybody, everybody doing a great job. We still one short. We did hire a part-time week before last, but he started doing a great job.
Slowly but surely.
Yeah, yeah, everything's, everything's good. Everything is.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question actually doesn't have anything to do with your report, but during our Ways and Means Committee meeting, you submitted your proposed budget for twenty twenty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, on the cover of your submission, it states, "To the mayor, Rob Johnson, sanitation supervisor, a position has been eliminated in the sanitation department." When did that happen, and who approved for that position to be eliminated? And this is dated August the twenty-third.
Okay, we've been running ads trying to get a replacement driver. We were one short when I came in December, and we're still one short, but we've been able to get by really good without filling that job position. Elimination may have been a wrong word. I'm sorry if I did wrong. I was just trying to make a request on something that couldn't possibly go right for everybody else if we did eliminate that job. I've talked to the crew, and everybody's happy with the way things are going, and personally, I don't see the need for, for another person.
Okay, but only the governing body, the mayor nor the department head, according to statute Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-eight one oh three, the city council would have to eliminate. Now, you can leave the position open. You do as the department head. You do have the right to do that, along with the administration, but when it comes down to eliminating a position, it should come before the, before the city council.
And that's my bad. It's the wrong wording. I was just making a request as bad. And we've done really good, and, you know, if there's any way of getting the guys any more money, I believe we could do without the other position being filled.
So, it's been vacant since December.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry about the wording.
No problem. I mean, I was just trying to figure out that I missed something that had come before the council, and we, I mean, what happened, who got, who got, you know, removed from the position.
Right, right.
That was just his, his request for next year's budget.
It doesn't say request. Well, it says, "A position has been eliminated."
That's, we have nothing has been eliminated.
What this says, it's in black and white.
I know, that's, like I said.
That's my fault. I've written it correctly.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
It's just a request.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's move the building official, Mr. Johnson.
School's coming right along. The gym is about sixty-five percent completion, and the school is about fifty-five percent, sixty percent at most, but progress is being done, and they're doing a good job. We.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir.
When you say gym, what could you say arena? Because one of the reasons why we did that is to give the girls a place to dress and practice, and then the cheerleaders also. So, we're going to use it for a multi-purpose place to kind of help benefit all the students. And then, on the other side of it, we're going to have a walking track on the upper level that will be available to the citizens. We'll have a tenant on duty also there for safety reasons.
My bad. Once again, a bad choice of words. It's, everything's going good with, citizens of Moorean should really be proud of it. First class in my book. Getting back on some condemned properties that we talked about last, last time. We sent out some twenty, twenty-two certified letters. I got eleven of them back that we've not signed, and the mayor and I are working to see if there's any other process there is for doing this. You send a letter out, they acknowledge they got it, then we proceed with cleaning it up. Without that letter, there's a clause in our ordinance stating what we must do, and everybody's a little skeptical. We're trying to make sure we do it right. The letters are seven dollars and thirty-eight cents a piece every time you send one out, and it's getting to be pretty pricey, so. But on the good side, we've got five properties cleaned since the last sanitation meeting, I mean, city council meeting. We also have three. No, actually, we have four houses on the list to be burned. No, on top of these five, it's already been cleaned. We've got four to be burned once the burn ban is lifted. They're on Carey Street, Pearson, South Main, and West Church. Once again, the fire department's going to help us on those, and the people have committed to have them done that own the property right now. We've had seventeen vehicles removed from the city limits by the help of the Moorean Police Department, and they have done a terrific job of helping me get these cars out of here. We've had them removed from Millwood, Lincoln Street. We've had them moved from Pine Street, Arkansas Street, and South Main. I estimate we've got about another thousand to get, but we've got to start somewhere. We got seventeen out of here this past month, and we're working on it right now. We've got a, got a crew that's picking up junk just about every day. That's going real good. Our limbs have backed off a little bit because we've had just a little trouble with a truck, but we've got it back running, and we should be in the process of picking up limbs again within the next week. That's where we are on that.
Rob, what process would it, citizens? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Alderman Marshall.
Okay, because I know I got some phone calls, and I had an extent to the mayor the past week about, which we do know there's an ordinance on the book about non-riding vehicle properties. But this person was concerned that, that the City of Moorean is making money off of these vehicles, and there's about ten thousand vehicles that's on the list to be towed, identified, and the person wants to know is, you know, basically, the city is making money off of these vehicles that are being taken from individuals' yards, and have a cost of around about four hundred dollars is what somebody had mentioned to me. And so, and that, and that was my response. And we do know that there is an ordinance for that, but to go ahead and have a conversation, you know, with Rob about it. Are you, are you giving him a letter to have these vehicles move within a certain, like a time?
Yes, ma'am.
Or what's the process?
The process is I get a complaint. I find the owner, or the owner of the property, rather, a lot of, a lot of the times, the vehicle is on somebody else's property. So, it goes back to the owner of the property. I contact them. They have ten days by ordinance to get rid of the vehicle. Now, you can maintain one at the house if you're repairing it, but there's also a clause in order stating that you have seven days to get it repaired. I'm working this, I'm working with several people right now that are having trouble getting parts, and, you know, things are expensive. We totally understand that. We're not just out to tear people up and get on people, so. So, I mean, I've got several that we're working with. I've got a person on Wheeler Street. I've got another gentleman on South Main, uh, that, that we're working on, uh, Cloquet. I'm working, not Cloquet, uh, uh, Pearson, I believe, corner of Pearson and, and, uh, over by Charlie. Well, I don't, I'm going blank on that street.
St. James is the one that area all here, so.
Yeah, it's the one running north and south.
McCollum.
McCollum.
McCollum, yeah, I'm sorry. And, uh, uh, after the, after the ten days is up, now what the city can do, uh, is, is get the vehicle impounded for another fourteen days. The city owns it for fourteen days and then the city can sell it. If nobody, if nobody claims it or, or removes it from the city.
Okay, 'cause I think that's what the court, that's what this individual who contacted me had concerns about. If, if they're not able to recover their property, what was going to be the common sale of the vehicle?
Okay, right, right now, Ms. Marshall, we, we have worked out a deal with, with both, uh, wrecker companies and Warren. Uh, or whichever one's on call at the time, Kathy's or Frazier, Frazier, Kathy, whichever one it's time. Uh, and they, they, they moved the, the vehicle for the vehicle. They're required by state law, there's a different law than what our ordinance states. They're required to notify the owner of the vehicle. And, and they have like two weeks, uh, to, uh, pay for the wrecking bill and get to, get the car moved somewhere else. Or it becomes property of the wrecker service, but that's a completely different law than our ordinance. But the, the wrecker company has agreed to take the vehicle at no cost to the city for just the vehicle, and that's the way we've been doing it. We have not, the city has not collected one dime of any of the vehicle. Uh, now, the majority of the vehicles that are being moved are being moved by the individual that owns the property on their own. Uh, so we, we hadn't had to use a wrecker but a couple of times, uh, independent wrecker just a couple of times so far.
Okay, well, the main thing is make sure it's still your wrecker. So I don't know whose there are the tenants and maybe one of the persons in contact with me. Uh, but at least, uh, you know, it's explained and people can understand the process and know that, you know, they're not being picked on, just driving by deciding to go and take a vehicle from a person's yard.
No, ma'am. I work strictly off complaints.
Right, complaints. And that's what I had mentioned, you know, you know, because Warren is too big for some person to, to drive around and just, decide to go and tow this vehicle. It's strictly from complaints and we understand that. So we need to make sure our patrons understand that someone asked to complain about it.
Well, and, Ms. Marshall, when I, when I meet or talk to someone on, on, on somebody, if somebody's going to complain against you, for instance, I will go to you and let you know that there has been a complaint filed. And, I mean, that's the way I, that's the way I work it. And, and I think, I think people are pretty well satisfied. Uh, I mean, like I said, we're not out to, to just, you know, just get mean and, and do that. Although I think we might need to get a little meaner, but, uh, there's, there's, uh, uh, maybe that's the wrong word too, but anyway, uh, that's our process right now and it seems to be working.
So as long as the patrons know that the city is not parking or taking your vehicles?
No, ma'am, not, not, not the way we're doing it now, no, ma'am, not at all.
Okay, all righty.
Alderman told for you had a question.
Well, basically he answered. I was wanting to know what process would the citizens go through and would notify him with a complaint? And then we'd take it from there.
All right, is there anything else? No, okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, um, street committee, Mr. Did I skip one, Ms. Kelly? Street, wait, street foreman, Mr. Arndt.
Good evening. Uh, it's pretty much, we have been busy bushhogging. We, uh, got caught up. We should finish all of the bushhogging tomorrow. Uh, it's down to the wire. I'm running the crew and we're packing potholes, cutting limbs. Uh, at times for mess, we are cleaning the ditches. Uh, I have prepared a list, uh, of the ditch cleaning that we have done. If anyone wants one, I can provide you with a copy of it.
I'd like to have one.
Yes, ma'am.
You can bring one too, to me.
You are the one.
If you're coming.
I'll come over too.
Ms. Marshall, would you like one email to you?
Thanks.
Yes, please.
Okay. And we'll see that Ms. Mosley gets one too since she's not here.
We have completed some drainage issues, uh, through the woods where we wouldn't. We've had, uh, a lot of backlog, uh, properties that was, that they've made to be claimed through the woods. Uh, we actually got in there since it's been dry enough to do those. We're just, like I said, passing potholes as much as we can, weed eating.
Have you fixed the one on Rock Street?
Ma'am?
Have you, um, repaired the pothole on Rock Street?
I have not seen a pothole on Rock Street, on Rock Street itself. Uh, that I'm aware of. Are you talking, I, I went both north and south and I have not actually seen one. 'Cause there is a dip in the road, uh, on Rock. But it's, uh, Culver has collapsed on the edge and the ground is dipped. But, uh, as far as it being a pothole, no, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, when I walk through there, I'll take a picture and send it to you.
Yes, ma'am, please do. Uh, at any time that any of the, uh, Aldermen, all women wanna ride around in their, in their ward to look. Uh, perhaps just give me a call and we'll get up and go right around and look and see what your concerns are, see what we can do to fix it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is, uh, Alderman Mosley's not here. Okay, uh, Ms. Marshall, you did, you already stated that there's a community and economic development committee meeting.
Yes, that's gonna be next Tuesday, on October eighteenth at five P M.
Okay. Okay, now Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson, do you have a report?
I do. The City of Warren Ways and Means Committee met on September the twenty-eighth, uh, here in the courtroom at five P M. Uh, each Alderman was presented with a packet of information from our meeting so that we would have the, uh, data that the committee, uh, reviewed. Uh, just to, uh, share with you, uh, the meeting consisted of the proposed, uh, twenty twenty-three budget. And each of you should have received a document that looks like this. Uh, the mayor shared with us that she used the, uh, current budget, which we passed in twenty, uh, twenty-two, and, uh, based it off of that. And if you'll notice in the right-hand corner, um, beginning with, uh, page two, it says nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-two in the left-hand corner, the document, the thick document that you have. Uh, it is, um, self-explanatory. However, um, looking at the budget on page ten, um, where it says, uh, proposed budget, contract services, agent, area agency on aging, concept, contract services consulting, uh, those items as it relates contracts, uh, economic development. Uh, we are referring to Community and Economic Development Committee that will be meeting, uh, on the eighteenth. Uh, we did not, uh, discuss the, uh, recommendation for the housing authority and water department employees as it relates the American Rescue, because this was discussed around the table. So if any Alderman have a recommendation, if you would share that information with the committee, we would be, uh, happy to receive it and share it during our next meeting. American Rescue Funds, you did receive a copy of the balance. And that sheet looked, was a spreadsheet, uh, that had rescue grant at the top. And if you would look at the bottom of the page, nine hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars is the actual balance. Uh, it was also noted that if we chose to move forward, we would need to, uh, pass, uh, resolution amending the city and rescue grant budget for the purposes of claiming police salaries and employee payroll contributions. And it, uh, it's actually spelled, um, this out and this was a recommendation of the, uh, municipal league. In your information, uh, you received the proposal from the, uh, department head's request. And the, uh, first one that I have, and that's because I had already had it out, was from the, uh, sanitation. You saw here, um, the department head stated that he was recommending, uh, that the council eliminate a position and more or less spread the amount for that salary over to the, uh, employees, uh, equally. And he said that it would be approximately three thousand, seven hundred, seven dollars and fifty cent. Also attached to that, um, you will see the proposed, uh, budget that was listed for twenty twenty-two and the proposed one for twenty twenty-three. Um, to include the daily, um, operation. The road department submitted, uh, a request, uh, to promote one of their, uh, employees who is a lead crew supervisor and stated that this employee had been with them since, uh, with us since twenty twenty fifteen. And he would like for this employee to have the salary of fifteen point nine step, uh, A three. And this came from, um, the department head, Thomas Berger. Also, as you, uh, foresee, you do see the proposed budget for twenty twenty-two and then the amount for proposed for twenty twenty-three. Recreation, uh, you do have, uh, that. You do have law enforcement. And I would like to, um, share with you the sheet that says city request. And this is in relation to the American Rescue Dollars. Uh, you will see the recommended, um, breakdown in each of the, uh, categories. The operating, uh, budget for the fire department. You will see budget, what we currently have for twenty twenty-two, proposed for twenty twenty-three, as well as the recreation and the administration, uh, to include, um, all of the departments of District Court, uh, et cetera. We did receive, and we will be referring, as I previously stated, a request from the Bradley County Economic Development Corporation, uh, a request, uh, for funding in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We did receive a request from the Chamber of Commerce, uh, for the same amount, twenty thousand dollars. And area agency on aging for the, uh, fans, air conditioners for seniors for two thousand dollars. And of course, uh, we as committee members have received, uh, a letter from Mrs. Lipton uh, for funding of two thousand dollars, uh, for, for the, uh, Bradley County, uh, museum. I would also want to just share with you two, uh, few items, just to think of that. Um, mayor, I guess I need to first ask you a question. The two percent for employees that was in the twenty, uh, twenty-two budget, uh, is that there? I did not see a handout, uh, on that, so is that there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's in the, the south, okay, so thank you.
Overall, the.
Okay, and then, uh, secondly, uh, council, you will need to make a decision. Uh, do you want to exhaust all of your American Rescue Funds in twenty twenty-three? Um, or do you want to use part of them? Uh, that is a decision that we would need to know before we schedule our, uh, second Ways and Means, uh, committee meeting. Um, last, um, time period, uh, for the budget, this current budget, uh, we did, um, have a contractual agreement with the Pink Tomato Festival. Is this something that, uh, we want to do? Uh, the City of Warren pool needs renovations. Uh, we had asked, uh, Alderman Fraser, uh, and I believe, uh, Kyle were working on, what do we want to put in the budget, uh, for the, uh, city pool? The Bryant Building. Um, this has been an item that we hear quite often from, um, Aldermen's nerves. You're looking at roughly rounding up two hundred and twenty-six, uh, thousand dollars. The mayor was, uh, working to get, uh, the total amount, uh, for, um, the demolition of getting this building, uh, removed. Uh, do we want to, I just shared with you that the American Rescue Dollars, we have a balance of nine hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety cent. If we spend two hundred and twenty-six thousand, that is one to be a big chunk. Do you want to do this in phases? Do you want to pull all of the dollars out? What do we want as a council, uh, to do with the, uh, Bryant Building? Also, would just like to point out that within the budget that I just shared with you, the thick one, uh, two hundred thousand is listed there for paving. We know that paving is a major issue for, uh, our city streets along with drainage, along with, um, individuals, um, wanting their streets, uh, paved. Uh, is two hundred thousand enough? Uh, we normally do a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I mean, this is something that as a council, uh, we need to know so that we can appropriately add, uh, to the proposed budget that, uh, we will be, uh, passing.
It's not a move.
Okay, okay, well, if you will submit something to this committee, we will be very, very happy.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, contracts, um, you know, um, what do we want to do, you know, about the, uh, the contract? Uh, we had listed the, the omery. You heard where the water department is asking, uh, to utilize that building. We know that, uh, the amount that we was given was twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars to put a roof on and other things would need to be done. How do we want to handle, uh, community and economic development? Does the city want to hire an employee? Do we want to hire a consultant? What do we want to do? However, uh, we are referring, uh, that to the, uh, Community and Economic Development Committee. And hopefully they will come back, uh, to us with, uh, with a recommendation for, for this, uh, Ways and Means Committee. Now, I just want to remind the council that the fiscal year for each city and town begins January one. Uh, it actually ends at midnight, December thirty-first of that, uh, particular year. The governing body of the, of the city council, if we do not pass the budget, and we should pass a budget, uh, on or before February one. If we do not pass a budget, then we will have to enact a temporary. If we do not pass a budget, then we will have to enact a temporary budget in order to keep our city operation going, et cetera. The mayor stated that she has submitted to us her proposed budget. The committee needs to go back, get your input as a council and have another meeting and possibly a third meeting and bring back our recommendations. So, I am open now for any questions that one might have.
I don't have a question, but I do have one clarification. You mentioned the armory and the water department. They're not looking at the armory per se, it's the shop, the street shop that they're, that they're asking.
I mentioned the armory because of the fact that we had talked about getting it equipped to do something for the public.
But not in, not in conjunction?
Not, not in conjunction. The water department is only, as you stated, is only interested in the street department old building that the roof will cost twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars to put, to put on.
And then another comment I'd like to make is the budget that I have proposed is not utilizing and using up all of the American Rescue money. The ordinance that, that the council will have to decide to what to do with will allow the money to be transferred into the general fund and then it can be appropriated. But that's not using all that money in one year.
But if we, if we do all of the things that's listed, it will, it will meet and exceed the nine hundred and...
But, but the proposal was not to spend it all at once, in, within the twenty-twenty-three budget.
But if...
It was just requests were made to you all to decide which ones you wanted to go ahead and do now or later.
That was my point, it's the reason that I asked the council if they had items that they wanted to add, that they would. But if you look at the nine hundred and however many thousand it is, if we did all of the things that was requested, it will exceed that amount.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
Okay, any questions? That ends my report and we will get together and have a meeting after, after the eighteenth because we need to find out what direction or if any direction that the Economic and Development Committee would have for us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Moving on, parks and rec, Mr. Wagner is not with us tonight, they're still playing ball ball, so he is, he's out of pocket right now. Planning Commission, you've got the minutes of their monthly meeting. Aviation Commission, we do have a meeting set, I believe it's next Thursday. Charlotte, give me a heads up if I got it right, the twentieth at six o'clock. And Water and Sewer, you've got their minutes and the balance sheet. Housing Authority, no meeting. Cultural Center, you've got the monthly report. The Cultural Center is still being utilized by the school until they get their arena or their, their cafeteria back up and running. Is there any unfinished business? And no public statement, no one signed in that did not speak, any new business? Any announcements? I do remember Homecoming is this week and if you will notice coming up the hill across the railroad track, Make Horn Shine has done their last project and they have a new mural that is reflective of our lumberjacks, so it's, it's kind of an addition. Yes, ma'am. The history walk downtown has been canceled for now. The narrator that was coming from Little Rock had a tragedy in her family and was not able to come Saturday. Fall Festival downtown, don't forget, is October the twenty-ninth. We've got several class reunions scheduled for October, so we will be having a lot of visitors in town and so, you know, if you meet someone that you haven't seen in a while, just remember, you are an ambassador for Warren when we have out of hand gifts. I need a motion to pay the bills for September. Motion in second to pay the bills for September, any discussion? All those roll call.
Alderman Marshall?
Yes.
Alderman Hopper?
Of course.
Alderman Mosley? Alderman Fraser?
Yes.
Alderman Henderson? Yes. Alderman Burks?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting for October will be set for, the agenda meeting will be on the tenth at seven A.M. And Tuesday, the fourteenth will be our agenda meeting at five thirty. I need a motion to adjourn.
I know that we're going.
Sir.
Motion in second, so we are adjourned.